Uh, to the mayor, I didn't know he was going to re- to record the uh, ca- council, Council of the whole.
Okay, alright, we're live, okay. The Village and Laker High Committee of the whole meeting is now in session, today's date is Monday, April twenty seventh. The time is now seven oh six, roll call, Ms Randolph?
Mayor Rubikaunsey Mumfree.
Present.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Present.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Present.
Linda, Councilwoman Linda Childs Jeter.
Present.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Absent. Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin Williams.
Present.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Absent, we have five who are present, two who are absent, we do have a quorum.
Alright, um, so what I have is old business, um, at the end of the day today, we got a final update on the COVID nineteen. So I had Ms Randolph send you all an email, I don't know if Mr Duke is able to, if he received it, so he could share it online. But I'm gonna read it again, actually. When we have the regular council meeting, but Governor Dewine today, he came on at two o'clock today. And he did an update, uh, responsible protocols, uh, for getting back Ohio to work. So it looks like he has five protocols for all the businesses. And, um, we're gonna make sure, actually, um, Mr Thornhill is putting that on the website as we speak. And we'll be listing that, but basically they're saying, uh, no mask, no work, no service, and no exceptions for any businesses that you go into. Which I'm very glad that they're gonna do that. Um, also, um, we have, they're gonna be conducting daily hea- health assessments when it comes to employers and employees. Which they're doing a self-evaluation to determine if they are fit for duty. And maintaining the good hygiene at all times, the hand washing and social distancing that we already know that. And, uh, step four was clean and sanitize the workplaces throughout the workday at the close of business or between the shifts. Um, they still will be having the, uh, limiting, limit capacity to meet the so- your social distancing guidelines. So this is what, I don't know if you all could see that, this is what came across today. On the decision that Governor Dewine has took, um, taken the first step for the state of Ohio. Anybody have any questions regarding it?
I do, Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Um, so are we gonna have our businesses post this and make sure that they know that in order to run a business, you need to wear a mask and the guidelines? Cause I know we're smaller, and I'm sure when they made these decisions. They had larger scale in mind, I'm just thinking, are we requiring, um, our mom and pop stores and restaurants to wa- they have to wear masks? Okay, so are we sending out a letter along with this information, or are we just expecting them to know what the governor is expecting of them?
Well, we just got it like at five forty, so we're gonna be making copies and distributing to the companies. Um, I did talk to, uh, Ms Delores Lindsay, and she's asking for us to get several copies taken down to the health center as well. Um, Ms, um, Ms Randolph will be faxing these to the five locations, but I do think we need to stop by, uh, those five places just to make sure they have it posted.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Who is the we?
Oh, Ms Randolph, Ms Randolph. Ms Randolph, I just so happened to talk to Ms, I left the very end before I came, um, home, that this came across, he sent it like at five forty, came across the email. But I didn't get a chance to watch the news, uh, the press release, uh, at two o'clock today, and this is what they wrote out for the protocol.
I saw the document and, and glanced through it. Uh, that will not go to the manager's office to the, to make sure that that gets done, is the responsibility of the clerk, just asking.
Well, we, we, when I talked to Ms, um, Ms Lindsay, I just told her we were gonna get some copies down to her, but yes, we can get it to, to Mr Duke's isn't here, we'll make sure to get this to, to Ms Donna, but I think Byen is already posted, cause she's the one that also sent the copy as well to us. So she's already began to post it in the village, and so she has the original copy that came out.
Okay, you can, you can email that document to the health center.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to even enter the building, just in, uh, send it to Mrs Lindsay.
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, were you done, uh, Ms Childs Jeter? I was gonna say, a robo-call might help too, just not anything long, but maybe just to pull out the finer point so that, you know, um, businesses or people who know people who run businesses in the village, um, can have the specifics of what needs to happen in their business, in terms of.
Um, speaking of the robo-call, um, we had problems with the robo-call this weekend, and I actually talked to a gentleman this afternoon, because it wouldn't even allow us to go through. So I talked to him, and he said that they had problems with their malware, with another company that they, that they worked together, but nothing that we have is, was compromised. But that's why no robo-call was made for the food pantry, and so, he's saying possibly today or tomorrow, we should be able to go in and, and do the robo-calls like we've always done.
Okay, and Mayor, I will have, uh, Ms Pope, uh, instruct, uh, Byen to send them out, work with, uh, Ms D, I think she already has the business addresses. To send that out to the businesses directly as well.
Okay, um, so Mr Duke, with the Sheriff's Department, as we had talked, uh, previously, will they be going past the businesses, making sure that they're, that these postings are listed and that it's being enforced?
Uh, I would have to talk with, uh, uh, Lieutenant Boeing, to see what the strategy is at this point. Uh, I haven't seen anything come down from the sheriff's office as of yet. The, the opening, so I'll be talking with him and Captain Butler in the next day or so, to see what their plans are.
Okay, alright, hi, Ms Baber, good to see you. Let the record show, Ms Baber is in the meeting, please.
And Council, Councilwoman Mitchell as well.
And Ms Mitchell, I think she can't speak on there, let me open up her mic.
She.
She got herself muted, okay.
Yes, it looks like it.
Mr Duke, if, um, the Sheriff Office doesn't necessarily put out anything to say this is what, um, he would like for his department to do, is that something that we can ask them to do, even if that is not something that the entire department is doing throughout the count?
Well, I, I think, yes, we can, but I think basically it will align with, you know, what everyone else is doing and what the governor's directives are, so. I, I don't foresee it being a problem to, uh, ask them to go out.
Okay.
And, and, and check some of the businesses as a routine check, you know, just kinda standing in, in one area, just kinda move around and, and make sure, and perhaps, um, talk to some of the business owners.
Mayor. Yes, ma'am.
Mr Duke, maybe i- it might be helpful if they kept a couple of copies in their car, that way when they're asking friends to move it along, that they give them the guidelines, maybe they, well, here's a copy of it, I'm not ticketing you, I just, so we can all stay safe, just to keep a positive, friendly relationship between the sheriff and our residents, we don't want them to, you know.
Good, good idea, I mean, it'll limit the conversation if they had those handouts, so I'll instruct Byen to make sure that they have those in their, in their vehicles as well, and, and provide them copies of.
Any other, anything else?
Show me how to make it see everybody.
Ms Mitchell. Oh, yes, Ms.
Our school was over there too.
I was just trying to help Ms, Ms, Mr Vern, she was asking how to see everybody, your menu button.
I just let her do it because she wants to be in the way.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, um, since we're talking about the COVID, uh, COVID nineteen, I did wanna talk about Mayor's Court, uh, since, and put that in there. So, um, we're beginning to have discussion on what, what Mayor's Court is going to look like on May thirteenth, that's if it's gonna open or not. Um, we are looking at, um, Hamilton County and the other municipalities. Um, I did have an email conversation with Mr Duke as far as, um, maybe we may have to have a, was it a Plexiglas shield? Uh, for us when it comes to Mayor's Court. Um, we're talking about, uh, only allowing five people in Mayor's Court, and have them lined outside six feet, uh, and then we possibly may have to, um, as they, you know, as they leave, uh, because it's gonna be hard trying to manipulate who's on the, when they call out the docket. So we may have to look at having walkie-talkies with the officers, so they can let us know who is in line. So we're looking at that, um, to see how it's gonna roll off, um, I will be talking to the prosecutor and the magistrate as well.
Okay, and Mayor, something else that Ms Pope and I was, uh, talking about earlier today, is the, uh, is the potential to also have some of the face shields, uh, in the event that someone would like, like one of those to wear during the Mayor's Court as well. Or if you like the, uh, Plexiglas in front of your area, then we, we'll make that happen, uh, just the same, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're just trying to make sure we have those options available.
Right, so, so we'll look at, um, signs saying, we'll have to have a mask to enter the building, things like that as well. So they will know what to expect when they come inside the building. It just depends on what the gov- what Governor Dewine, um, and Hamilton County, the court system decides how they're gonna proceed. Mayor. Yes, ma'am.
Just some reference to that, um, how do we ensure that, um, when coming to Mayor's Court, that they don't use the excuse, well, I don't have a mask? So will we be able to provide a mask for them, or, cause you, you know that's gonna be the excuse, I don't have one?
We may have to look at what we can, what we can afford and what's out there, depends on, um, the availability, you may have to get them some bandanas. It just depends on what's out there, I'm so, I'm serious, because if we can't get the mask, if they're giving them all to fire EMS, we have to find another type of masking for them, as, um, in case they don't have any.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think it's our responsibility to buy some, if they're saying that in order to have a business or operation, you got to wear a mask. We gotta buy them for our people anyhow, so why not just buy it in bulk for that occasion? Right, don't we have to have them?
I agree.
Well, Mayor, uh, again, Ms Pope and I were talking about that today, and she has, uh, located some masks, we talked about the potential to, uh, at least buy a couple, a hundred or so, you know, in the event that people coming to Mayor's Court don't have any, that we could provide those, so.
Right.
She was looking into that, and will, will give us an update when she, when she have those ordered, I guess.
Okay, Councilman Daniels?
In that situation, I'm, I'm serious too, will we be allowed to sell them? If I come to court and I don't have one, will we be able to sell those masks, um?
Same question.
Is that a no?
Hey.
Yeah.
I didn't say no.
Well, uh, Mayor, um, that was a question I told Donna, that would be a Mr Desai question, as of whether or not it would be legal for us to sell the mask.
You could stand out across the street on the other sidewalk, maybe. Mrs Desai.
Well, you know, I take, uh, I guess a different, uh, uh, view of this, um, I know that if you are going into businesses, they're asking you or telling you, you must wear a mask. So I don't see why our business would be different from anybody else's business, it's the person's responsibility, the citizen's responsibility to wear a mask. Now, they're not requiring, you know, the N ninety-five mask. Um, they're, they're saying just some kind of mask, and, you know, yeah, I mean, I, I've seen, you know, my son and his friends are making masks out of their old t-shirts, uh, there's a YouTube video that shows you how to cut an old t-shirt, and it actually has, you know, when you cut it, it's got the strap, so you can tie it down. So, you know, I'd hope if my, my, my minor child and his friend can figure out how to make a mask, that, you know, people that have been charged with a criminal act, you know, have, um, the same wherewithal to come in with a mask. I, I think as you mentioned earlier, when you referenced bandanas, I mean, um, when I have wore a mask, um, I've just taken one of my old bandanas and kind of, you know, um, you know, Lone Ranger style, put it on my face and and gone in, you know, so I, I think that's all they're asking, is something like that. So, um, you know, I, I would recommend that the protocol, um, you know, be followed with the idea that, you know, if you are entering a business, um, as a, for lack of a better word, a customer, uh, you know, it's your responsibility, just like it's your responsibility if you have signs of COVID nineteen, to not go into a business, you know, and to quarantine yourself. Uh, that's your responsibility as, uh, as a citizen of the United States and a resident of Ohio. So, um, you know, and that really is one of my, my bigger concerns, I presume at Mayor's Court, there will be the screening done of people coming in, and so, you know, um, I have yet to see this device, but I, the device I know of choice is the one that they seem to run across the forehead, and it seems to give you some kind of instant reading. But that would be my, you know, my bigger concern, cause that is, I think, our responsibility, is that, you know, we need to, um, um, you know, be able to, to, however you wanna to phrase it, test people as they come in, but you need to be able to temperature check them, because even if they're affirming that they don't have COVID nineteen symptoms, even if they show up with a face mask, if they're running a temperature, if they're coughing, if they're sneezing, if they've got a runny nose, uh, then they're going to be denied access to Mayor's Court, uh, which is obviously a public forum. You know, at that point, you know, what I think Ms Ty and, and Ms Gaines have to be, um, have, you know, in, in the queue and ready to do, and maybe they need Ms Terry's help with this, is that you have to be prepared to issue a continuance, um, on the hearing if they are, are, you know, showing a fever. Now, I don't do criminal law, but one of the few things I know about it is, there is this right to have your case heard within a certain amount of time. And so the defendant can sign a voluntary waiver, allowing the case to be continued without violating that constitutional right. It might make sense to take a look at, i- if there are any Mayor's Courts that have been operating, what they've been doing to handle this. Um, I'd be happy to have, um, Megan Donilon, who is the, uh, my colleague and the prosecutor for Mayor's Court in Montgomery, I'd be happy to have her give you a call and let you know how they've been handling that. But that's my bigger concern, is that if somebody does test positive for COVID nineteen, and I don't mean as in the, you know, the swab test, but you know, the temperature, that, I guess a better way to put it is, they're showing symptoms of COVID nineteen.
There you go.
Um, you know, what policies and practices and protocols do we have in place to continue the case, have them sign a voluntary waiver, so that they can come back when they're healthy and not a threat to public health, without us getting caught in that constitutional, you know, gotcha game of, oh, well, you continue my case, and I didn't agree to come back, and therefore you violated my right to, I'm gonna call it a speedy trial, I don't know if it's called that, but you violated that right, and therefore I'm, I'm no longer, you know, you can't, you have to dismiss the case. So, I'm happy to, are you interested in, in maybe talking to Ms Donilon and seeing, you know, how they've been handling it in Montgomery?
I, yeah, yes, we are, because I know we only have like two more weeks, and so we would like to find out, so we can be prepared.
I'll ask her to, uh, to give you a call, um, or maybe it might be easier, cause Ms Terry probably needs to be part of that. Send an email to you and Ms Terry to maybe propose some times when you can all talk on the phone.
Can you also send it to Ms Rita, cause she's the interim at this time?
Rita Watson?
Rita Watson, yes, sir.
Okay, what is her email address, do you know offhand?
Uh, it should be rita dot watson at V L H O dot org.
Rita dot?
Rita dot watson, is it a dot?
What was it, R Watson?
It might be R Watson at C O.
R Watson?
Yeah.
I have to look, I, I'll look, I'll look after the meeting and send it to you.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Alright, thank you, um, Ms Pope, better Hannah?
So we had a discussion today, myself and, um, Dee and Byen, about whether we could actually not allow someone in the building if they're not masked. But we had that question, I mean, we had that conversation before, um, Dewine came out with his mandatory rules, so we did, uh, go ahead and, um, we looked at ordering the, uh, thermometer that, that reads their forehead, and it would be for a child or adult, and we ordered some, uh, gloves, and we ordered some more, uh, disposable mask.
Okay.
Do you miss Pope?
Thank you. Thank you. Answered a lot of questions in one breath.
Should've spoke up earlier.
Yeah, alright, okay, um, anything else regarding the, um, COVID? Oh, I'm sorry, I did wanna mention, I'm gonna announce, so the last email that I got, it lists, uh, specific days. Let me see, uh, take it forever, okay, take it forever, I sent you all an email I received, and it, it lists the total days of when business, certain businesses can operate. I'll find it before, cause I wanna announce it during the regular council meeting, so I'll get that plugged back up in my phone, but I think I did send it to everybody. You would've got it like about five forty. Okay, alright, uh, new business, oh, there's anything else? Okay, alright, new business, uh, Resolution twenty twenty R twelve, authorizing the Finance Director to increase appropriations in the Capital Improvement Fund, Municipal Road Fund Projects, and to amend the statement of estimated resources for twenty twenty, any questions? Okay. Any miscellaneous business?
Yeah, I don't, I guess this is miscellaneous, and you may have already missed it, because I did talk to Ms, uh, Randolph. Um, on our minutes for last week, they that we need to put that this was, uh, done via Zoom.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go back and put that on our minutes.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to make the necessary corrections. Okay, alright.
Just real quick, I'm sorry, real quick question, just, just off the CARES Act email that we got from, uh, Sheriff Brown's Office and Ms, Ms, um, Ms Leah Brown, Mr Duke, didn't know if you had got that email, just as, I know we were talking about, um, I'm pointing this way, cause that's where you're at, Ms Donna, I'm sorry, but, um, but, uh, when Ms Donna was talking about how we were, uh, purchasing, uh, certain things, those funds, they, they come out of that, right, like the, the whole process of being re-refunded, and, uh, or just using those funds to purchase those things, um, not sure, did, did you, did you get the email, Mr Duke?
I, I, I don't recall, Devon.
Okay, I saw, okay, I, I forwarded to you now, just to make sure, cause I thought that you were on the, that you all were on it as well. But, um, I'll make sure you get that, it just, it just, it, the, 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 the headline of it was Sheriff Brown's CARES Act, um, just, just, and they just goes into just municipal funding and just how those things, I'll make sure I send it to everybody, actually.
I think we sent that.
Yeah, I thought so, and I would just, yeah, yeah, so, but I'll, I'll make sure, and then we could just, we could just wrap it about later, um, I was just curious, if that was all tied in together.
So.
Is your question?
The phone, so I'm asking, so I know right now, I think it's coming out of just probably the general fund, but if I'm reading this correctly, everything that we spend out of that, uh, I don't know if we need to make another tagline, that's above my pay grade, but all I'm saying about, if I'm understanding everything we spend, that's directly goes to COVID nineteen, whether it's masks, whether it's gloves, anything that we.
Yeah, I, I've, uh, instructed Ms Pope to str- track all the, uh, costs that we're, we're expanding during this time, so that when fund, funding becomes available, we can submit for reimbursement.
Yeah, so that, so the, the, the emails, subject, we browse secures, commitment from White House, I'm sending that to everybody now, so, just to make sure, and then from there, we can just get. Sorry, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, we wanna make sure that we keep track of everything, that would include that, um, uh, the letter to the sheriff, that would also be like, uh, Exhibit A or Exhibit B, once they release money to local government, as, um, proof that we need funds, am I correct, Mr Duke?
Yes, ma'am, we, we, yes, ma'am, and, and we'll address it, uh, at the, uh, regular meeting a little more in detail.
Okay, alright, okay. Anything else, any other miscellaneous business? Alright, motion to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll move for adjournment, second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any names? Alright, so we're gonna go on into, um, the regular council meeting, unless someone needed to take a break.
Nope.
We're gonna keep on moving, alright, so we're gonna go into the regular council meeting. Village and Lincoln Heights Regular Council Meeting is now in session, today's date is Monday, April twenty seventh, the time is now seven thirty-three. Roll call, Ms Randolph?
Mayor Rubikaunsey Mumfree.
Present.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Present.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Present.
Councilwoman Linda Childs Jeter.
Take you, unmute yourself.
I did, present.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. She's muted as well. Ms Baber?
Bottom left-hand corner with the microphone, Ms Baber, I'm sorry. Bottom left-hand corner.
Should I come back to her?
Could you do for the record shows?
She'll figure it out. You have your host, you have your host there, he can do it.
I can't, I can't get it off of there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, see if I can. Let's see here. Let's see. There you go.
Ms Baber, are you present, I need you to.
Yeah, I'm present.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin Williams.
Present.
And Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. We have seven who are present, we do have a quorum.
Okay, is there a motion order for acceptance of the agenda?
Motion to accept.
Second. It's been moved in second to accept the, uh, agenda. Motion order for filing of the journal for Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes and Regular Council Meeting Minutes for Monday. I'm sorry, let me go back, motion order for Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for March ninth. And Regular Council Meeting Minutes for Monday, April thirteenth, is that a typo?
No.
This right now, okay, alright.
I had sent out the, um, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, I sent an email explaining to everyone how I had initially sent it to Mr, um, Duke's on the fourteenth of April, and I was going through my emails to make sure that everyone also had it, but when I didn't see that, I submitted them to everyone, that they were, uh, prepared on April fourteenth, or before April fourteenth, cause I sent it out to Mr Duke's, and I sent that email to Mr Duke's, to everyone to see that it was sent out.
Okay, alright, I got you.
We did not approve those minutes, um, at the April meeting.
We didn't have the committee on the whole at the April meeting, or earlier, the April.
I had to think about it, I had to think.
They only had counsel.
Yeah. That's why I had to look, I had to look, look again, I said, oh yeah, we did not have one, that was our first Zoom meeting. Thinking, second Zoom meeting, alright, is there a motion to accept it with the necessary corrections?
Motion. Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Announcements. Councilman Daniels. Oh, I'm mute. He's muted. He's just a talking. Mr. Duke, are you unable to?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was trying to get this thing out of front of my screen so I could read my announcements. But just real quick, so. My, 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 uh, my grandfather first off was wanting to thank Mr. Dukes. He wanted to thank you, where mayor. He also wanted to thank the, uh, the fire department and, um, the village of Lincoln Heights as a whole. One of the birthday parade celebration. So he just definitely wanted, um, say thank you. And then once we kind of get things back in order and we have people able to come back to the public, he wants to thank everybody personally. But, um, he, uh, he wanted to make sure that I thanked everybody for that. And just real quick, I just wanted to talk about, um, the meal distribution this week, just if we had anybody interested. So on tomorrow, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, lunch we provided at Lincoln Heights Elementary School. That's 1113 Adams Street. And then tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 6:30 Chick-fil-A provided at St. Monica's. And then Wednesday from 5:00 to 6:30, LHOI will have their Cafe Hope dinner at, um, at St. Monica's. Then Thursday, you could pick up groceries at the food pantry from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then Thursday evening, I'm sorry, and then Thursday, we also have lunch from 11:00 AM at 1:00 PM. That'd be a Lincoln Heights Elementary School. And then Thursday evening, dinner provided by Forever Kings at St. Monica's. And then Friday from 11:01, um, come get lunch by Habitat Humanity at St. Monica's, uh, entering from Douglas Street. So, um, those are all the announcements I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. Ms. Charles Jeter.
Yeah.
Any announcement for you?
Yes, I do. But Ms. Randolph is trying to get your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, I just wanted to see if I could get Councilman Daniels to forward it again to me via email, the listing of what he read. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, my announcement is a great big go. Thank, uh, everyone for all that you're doing in order to keep us healthy and fed and safe. Great big go hug to all of you. Be blessed. And to the fire department and to the sheriff.
All right. Ms. Councilwoman Baber, any announcement?
Oh, no announcements. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Goodwin-Williams?
Yes, just, um, the next economic development meeting will take place on May 4th at 6:30 PM, um, here on Zoom.
Okay.
Oh, and you still have one more day to vote. You can still drop your ballot off until tomorrow at the Hamilton County Board of Elections. Please vote. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Stinson?
I have no announcements.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I want to announce that we are expecting to continue with our regular Valley Pantry. This Saturday, it is to be at Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church. I'm not sure how that's going to work out because of Mayor Farley's, um, service. But far as we know, we're still going to have the pantry, the usual time, nine to 11. It is the first pantry of our usual season. So the Valley Pantry will be continuing for the season, the first Saturday of every month. And of course, we'll have it at different churches and, um, hopefully we'll have our robo call up so that we'll be able to announce it in case there is a change of location for Saturday.
All right. Mr. Dukes, any announcement for you?
Uh, Mary, I just want to thank, you know, everyone for the, uh, well wishes during this time. So, uh, looking, uh, definitely looking forward to, uh, sticking back in the saddle. And I'd like to thank Ms. Pope for all the work that she's been doing thus far. And, uh, that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Um, the announcement that I wanted to give was regarding the COVID. The COVID with Governor Dewine's announcement today, uh, he announced that May 1st would be this, this day will begin a phased in reopening of the state economy. May 1st. All health procedures that do not require an overnight stay in the hospital, veterinary practices, dental practices and doctor offices. May 4th, manufacturing, distribution and construction, and May 12 consumer retail and services. So they will be no mask, no work, no service and no exceptions. And we will be doing a robo call once our line has been fixed through the community bank system. So we will be making a robo call and we'll be getting out, uh, the brochures that the governor, uh, sent out regarding the stay at home, the social distancing and reopening the community. We will be making sure that every business gets this information so we can prepare to have masks in the village and masks, making sure that the businesses within the village of Lincoln Heights are allowing just mask only come into their establishment. That's the announcement that I have. Okay. All right. All right. Ms. Randolph, did you have any hearing from the residents?
No, not this week.
All righty. Next is the regular agenda communications to council from the clerk of council, Lisa Randolph.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I don't have any further, um, communication at this time except that the mayor's court is due to resume on May 13th. But additional posting will be listed on the robo call and posting at the five locations regarding mayor's court. Communication from the village manager, Mr. Anthony Dukes.
Yes, Mayor. Uh, just like to, uh, announce that the, uh, Hamilton County Planning and Development have, uh, released a call for grant application for the mini planning grant. However, due to the COVID-19 situation, they've, uh, they, they've noted that they will not be selecting outside contractors to do the work. But instead, the planning and development department will be assisting, uh, communities that are awarded was doing the, uh, studies and things of that nature. So, uh, I'm in the process of, uh, putting, uh, the application together. I'll, I'll send it to the, uh, economic development chair to see how she would like to proceed. And then it's perfect timing that the meeting is made for. So we can finalize everything then, uh, look forward to submitting the following day. I sent forth a letter, uh, to the sheriff department discussing or requesting, uh, reduction in fees. And perhaps even, uh, how that will affect, uh, the services as well. But we've been in discussion. I've been speaking with Captain Butler and, uh, Major Kettleman about the, uh, financial shortfall that this COVID-19 stay at home, uh, situation is gonna create for, uh, all the municipalities and counties and businesses as well. So that's one of the things I submitted the letter. You all should have a copy of that letter. That's a draft copy. I submitted it to you all so that if you have any comments or something that you think is, is missing. But that right there was basically to notify the sheriff department so that we could at least begin the conversation to see how that fee structure and service will look, uh, once we begin to feel the economic impact of this COVID-19 situation.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Duke, Vice Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Mr. Dukes, do we have any other, um, contractors or people that we need to write a letter to? And in other words, um, do we need to juggle some other things as well? The reason why I'm asking because if they do send some money down our way, we want to make sure that we at the, at the head of the table when it's time, we won't have all our ducks in a row. So if we need something, we need to go ahead and ask for it. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, Vice Mayor. And, um, the follow up to that letter to the sheriff is I'm, I'm putting together a memo to the council that will begin to outline some of these costs that we're gonna have to reduce or look at reducing COVID-19 and what that'll look like. So that'll give us, uh, some accountability moving forward when we begin to request that money. So, um, I, I am, I should have that together, uh, this week. Uh, again, I like to thank the sheriff department for reaching out to the village. They reached out to me and they did provide this information and some assistance in, uh, moving on these costs. So I'd definitely like to, uh, thank them for doing so.
That's a plus. Any other?
Uh, I do. I do, Mayor. Sorry. Uh, you all should have the news that we did receive the census rapid response grant. So we're in the process of, uh, uh, Ms. Pope submitted the, uh, survey response today. We're looking to receive the MOU within three days and we're gonna have to execute that and get it back to them. And at that time, uh, once we submit all the requested forms, they'll, uh, deposit the money within our bank account. And we can begin spending it up until, I think, what was that, September 2020? That we have being that, uh, the census outreach and, uh, collection was extended until that time. So we did get that. And I didn't want to send out the old application because they may have reduced some things or, or, or just are not fully awarded everything we requested. So I'd like to see what they're gonna provide to us, uh, in this MOU because it's gonna outline our original request and talk about what they actually funded. So as soon as we get that, I'll, uh, make sure that the council gets it. And we can, uh, go ahead and make moves to, uh, secure that funding and, and make the upgrades and the outreach efforts that are necessary for this census project.
All right. Any questions? Hey, Vice Mayor.
Something else too.
Oh, this is, this was with the census. Oh, okay. I'll forget.
Okay. Well, we, we also, we also received the award letter back from, uh, Department of Natural Resources today as well for the Memorial Field Grant. So we're looking to, uh, get started on that as well. So a lot of things happening all at once. So we're excited that we did receive those two and, and, and are hopeful that we'll get the mini planning grant. Uh, that's all I have at this time, Mayor, if there are any questions.
Mayor, hold on. I think Ms., I think the vice mayor had a question. Then we'll come back to Ms. Jeter.
I, I just, I, I read the, the NLC grant. Will that, um, change the scope of what we asked for?
Uh, they didn't say anything about changing the scope. I know they were talking about they reduced the staffing levels in some of the grants that were submitted. Uh, so that they could award more and they were leaning more towards the technology and things that we did actually request. You know, they had minimal staffing costs involved. So we're hopeful that we'll get everything back for pretty much.
Ms. Charles Jeter?
Thank you to Mr. Dukes and to, uh, Ms. Pope. Thank you for submitting that grant. But I do need copies to, uh, whatever you get back to incorporate it into my regional, uh, report that I have to do for AKA, including Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church.
We'll do so.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions for the vice, uh, for, um, Mr. Dukes? Somebody having some good music. All right. Next would be, um, Fire Chief Amos. Are you on the line? You may have to mute him.
Is, is he on? He's on the line. He there.
Hello, Chief Amos.
How are you, Mayor and Council?
Hello, how are you?
Hello.
Good, good. My video not on?
No.
Turn your camera on. I could, can you get it?
You might have to try it. Mr. Dukes does not let me do it. Start your video. There we go. Hello. Yes, Mayor, I might have a question. It was, it's going out, breaking up pretty differently.
Okay. Well, we're glad to see you, uh, at our council meeting and we just wanted to invite you to, um, elaborate a little bit on the, uh, March 2020 report.
Yes. Any, any in particular questions? I got some COVID updates too as well.
Okay.
Now I'm at the flip to my email here though. Real short, um, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, for, uh, Lincoln Heights and Woodlawn, we just have 10 positive COVID-19 cases. I, I believe six of those are in Woodlawn and the other four are in Lincoln Heights. And as they're sending those out, they send those out every time we make a transport or once they go to the hospital, they'll update us immediately for that. So they've actually just started creeping up here within the last five days. So we're kind of just starting to see cases in our area. We did increase our staffing when they started the two week period, the stay at home orders. And we kind of just went back down. Weird enough, the runs shot through the roof for about a week, then everything just dropped off. I'm not sure if you guys heard too as well, like the, the heart attack rate dropped 300%. That's probably because nobody's going to work, but. So everybody just staying home. But that has dropped and our runs have dropped significantly. So now with this opening back up, we're looking for the runs to tick up pretty high. So we'll see what happens with that too as well. We have one part-time employee that had to get tested and also AC Pittman had to go get tested too as well because they actually transported, uh, positive COVID patient and then they got sick within that five day timeframe. So just a brief update on that for the, the COVID stuff too as well. And just from the earlier meeting too as well, I'm not sure if Ms. Donna was saying or Ms. Pope was talking about the, the thermometers too as well. We have some of that stuff because we have to test our employees every day before they come in twice a day. And we kind of stole the same check sheet from all other municipalities or businesses. So we can share that too as well. If they're coming in, if you want to take temperatures, things of that nature, we can provide that too as well for you guys. The, where you can get like two inches from them, just the temporal thermometer that'll show the temperature. And then if they do have a temperature, and then I think as Ms., Mr., uh, I can't pronounce the name. Of, of saying what will happen after that, but we can help provide some of that equipment too as well for when the citizens are coming in. Anything else? Well, anything on the report there that needed to expound on? Any questions there?
Counsel? Any questions?
Well, we don't have.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got something to say. I thought that it was gonna be shared. Yeah, I thought it was gonna be shared on the screen. I don't know how to look at my email and you all beautiful face at the same time. But I'll read it later.
Okay. I, I, I think it's, it probably just needs to be disseminated there. And you, again, you can ask me it anytime. We did just have a, uh, fire in Lincoln Heights too as well. I, I did shoot that to Ms. Childs on that one. The one on, uh, I think it was Short Matthews in Chester, right on the corner, uh, kitchen fire there. And we had another one on, uh, Simmons. Was it Simmons? Simmons, the basement fire too as well within the last, last week and a half, we had two back to back in Lincoln Heights. Both electrical. The, we did get the calls and all that, both electrical. So just a lot of electrical issues going on right now. But it's been quiet for us overall.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, one more question. Um, I, I just want to let you know that uh, we'll be praying for your friends on the fire department. And we'll be praying for all of you all because I, I, you all on the frontline. And we appreciate you.
Definitely. Thank you for that because there is a Springdale firefighter that is infected, Springfield Township that is infected. And there's a couple, I know a couple of officers are floating around too. So it's kind of just reaching us. So and again, we're cleaning every three hours almost. So because we're sharing beds, sharing dishes. So the six feet thing kind of doesn't work in the firehouse. We're just praying that we don't get sick at this point. Because we're, we know where there are and we're still transporting these people and just trying to do the best as, as, as possible.
Bless you. So um, yes, Ms. Goodwin-Williams?
I was just gonna say, just, you know, with um, Amos reiterating the fact or just really bringing to light that um, the coronavirus has now reached our area. Um, just to maybe um, in a robo call, just to reinforce that information to let people know that we are not untouchable, you know, and we need to not be hanging out. You know, carousing and not being safe and practicing um, safe distancing, so.
Yeah, we have two older communities as well right here that coincide and intermingle. And it usually starts, because a lot of the nursing homes and things of that nature, that's where it starts and then just spreads like wildfire. And it has mutated at this point too. So who knows what it's gonna be. So as Ms. Goodwin said.
So um, I did have a question for Chief, uh, Chief Johnson. So as you go through between Lincoln Heights and Woodlawn, um, the social distancing when it comes to the different businesses, do you see any difference? Uh, what are the other other businesses within Woodlawn? Are they doing anything different? Are they posting? Or are they practicing the social distancing? Because we seem to have problems throughout our community where people just don't believe it.
Yeah, it's everywhere and that's really kind of, even with the PD and I'm not sure if the sheriff are kind of doing the same thing too as well. They're not going into houses at all unless we're fighting somebody. They're staying out in their cars. Because they, again, they're around it all day long. So they're not really enforcing it because it's kind of putting them, themselves in the harm's way and then taking it back home. So we're just kind of waiting it until it happens. Because then you're, you have to walk through every business. And like you said, there's so many different thought processes out there that it's not real, it's not this, it's not that. And I don't want to say that we're not taking it serious. We only, because we only have so much equipment. So we're only using it on the runs that actually require it. Because once we run out, we're, we're out. So we're actually only using certain, the masks that actually protect us when they're meeting all these requirements. It's the same thing. If we transport someone that's positive, they, we have to meet so many requirements or they won't test us or whatever the case may be. So it's real strenuous with us. On whether we get tested or not, but definitely if you're going out, I will put a mask on or don't, don't let the police and fire fool you like, oh, they don't have it on. But it's, we're doing it for another reason. Because we only have so much equipment that we have to go back in the next day. If that answers your question, Mayor, I don't even know if I, I did.
It did, it did. I, I'm just, I'm just hopeful that um, up in Columbus, as they continue to go back and forth, we're trying to end up in Washington DC that they finally decide that these monies need to go to local government. And so that's something that they're going back and forth on to try to get monies to the local municipalities, not just the, the small ones, the villages, the townships, not just the big cities. So I just want to encourage everybody for us to contact our state reps, our uh, senators, because we really need funding, just like you said, when y'all run out, y'all run out. So.
And Mayor, I'll keep you in the loop too with the current COVID cases yourself and uh, the safety chair. I'll just make sure you guys have those addresses and uh, the manager too as well. Because I don't think I had you on that email chain.
No, but, but I, I, um, but I, I think you may have an own information for me also on texting, but I'll it was a texting, so I'll make sure you get that. Councilman Daniels?
Yeah, just real quick, brother Amos, just uh, what's the uh, the turnaround time for confirmations? Uh, just out of curiosity. So if that, yeah, yeah.
The worst thing is it can go from forty-eight hours to five days. So sometimes we'll get a confirmation back in forty-eight hours and then we'll wait for five days. And then the other scary part is they'll tell you that somebody was negative. And then two days later, so, oh, we made a mistake. They're actually positive. So we're, so it's, yeah, the healthcare, it's real. And like, well, we just had this person around, five other people now, or a whole chef. So it's, it's scary. It's scary. And a lot of people are rethinking their jobs too as well, especially with family and they got other health issues at home. And then they're just running into these houses, transporting these people. And we may not, you may not get it, but you can take it home and give it to somebody else. So it's, it'll be interesting here with, especially with the demographics of our communities, of seeing what's gonna happen here within the next month or so. If it's gonna spike back up and it'll be very interesting. Thank you.
Okay. Chief Amos hit on something that I think a lot of young people um, around here aren't aware of is just what he said, is that you may be asymptomatic and not showing any signs. And then you take it home to your, your parents or your grandmother or somebody else who has all of those um, um, you know, ailments that make them susceptible to it. Yeah, yeah. So that's something that we, I don't know how to, you know, what to do or how to do that, but we have to get people in our community to start thinking about that. Just because you don't feel bad, doesn't mean you're not carrying the virus and can't pass it on to someone else who is.
Right, exactly. Until you get the fifty people, then everybody's scared. Then it's shutting the whole village or whatever down at that point. Then it's too late.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you so much uh, for that report.
Information, thank you.
Yeah, and we're, just text me, we're super busy right now, but just text me, I will get back, I promise. My, myself, Captain Brown or Carter Pittman.
There are motion to accept Chief Amos Johnson's report. Been moved and specked and all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, all right.
Mayor, can I add something real quick?
Yes, sir.
Um, I was just particularly intrigued by the chief's discussion about the nursing homes. Um, I think most of you know, my father who turns ninety this year is in a nursing home. Um, about, on, on or about March thirteenth, they had a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty residents. Um, they shut the place down that weekend. Um, so I haven't seen my father uh, since then, but even with the shutdown, they have had um, eleven cases of COVID nineteen.
Wow.
And that, as you know, I've asked questions um, is from the workers, the people that are coming there to work. Because as the chief was saying, um, even though they did the temporal screening and, you know, were looking for signs, they didn't have signs, but they had it and uh, residents gotten, got infected. So um, there was actually a news show on, on his nursing home last Thursday on the news. Um, you know, because basically, you know, over ten percent of the population after the shutdown got infected. Um, there were several deaths at the nursing home back in March when this first started. So just, you know, with the nursing homes that are in the community, whether they be Lincoln Heights, Woodlawn, you know, whatever, you know. Um, it's a scary thing because you would have thought the shutdown and the screening would have prevented further infection or at least minimized it significantly. And that's not the case.
Thanks. We're praying for you, Mrs. DeSai, for you and your family, that your dad will, will see it through, that we all will see it through.
Thank you.
Okay, right. Uh, next would be uh, committee reports. Uh, economic development, uh, Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams?
Yes, Mayor, I have to, they'll be brief. Um, the first one is from um, February, which is dated February third. Uh, the meetings um, came together at six forty-six PM. Um, all the members are present. In addition to the members was uh, Mr. Dukes, our village manager. Just briefly, under all business, the meeting um, was turned over to the village manager. Um, there were three things that we discussed. The first one was um, it says a continued discussion of villagers' twenty-year redevelopment plan. It should just say a discussion of um, of that, because I believe that was the first time that um, talked about that. But um, we talked about it in five-year increments. The second thing we discussed was um, development of the vacant lots um, in the ad, adaptivity of um, the re, of a reuse strategy and how to adapt to reuse those properties. Also, um, we talked about catalytic projects. Um, our discussion of catalytic projects and prioritizing uh, the Lindy Street projects as well as the Stephen Street uh, project as well. And how to, um, with the different, what some of the catalysts were in, in bringing multiple projects together in both those locations. Um, new business, we talked about the truck traffic restrictions on Shepherd Drive from Wayne Avenue um, to I seventy-five. Also, we discussed um, the village-owned properties and what it would look like potentially in terms of what properties the village wanted to hold on to and putting together, compiling a list of properties that we may want to um, release for sale to individuals. And then there was also discussion about the Arrow Hub District, which is right up around the Marianna uh, Terrace area. Um, and also had a discussion about Marianna Terrace in um, in particular. Um, there were no public comments, miscellaneous business, council thanked Mr. Dukes for cleaning up the property on Congress or having um, a crew clean up that property. Action items, um, just to continue to follow up and follow through with said projects and items mentioned above. Um, recommended, recommendations were just to maintain communications with our partners, um, committees and council as needed. Second one was the meeting that was held on March second. Uh, meeting started at six thirty PM. Um, and again, this was a continuation of the discussion about the twenty-year um, redevelopment plan. Also, continuation of the conversation of um, the vacant lots and the reuse strategy and also continued discussion about projects on Lindy and um, the Stephen Street corridor. And new business, we just had a discussion, um, beginning discussion of future land um, use. Again, um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Action items and recommendations were the same um, as the prior month. Um, more detail about both of those meetings can be found on record in the minutes. You can request those minutes from council clerk. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the economic chair?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Jeter.
Uh, to Ms. Kathy Goodwin-Williams, where are we with the CDC? Is anything going on?
Um, not at this time.
Is it suspended or is just?
Not at this time. I don't have anything I can share right now.
Nothing now. Uh, I did want to ask a question about, I know, maybe to council meeting, economic meetings back. Um, and it may be to Mr. Duke, as far as have we, how are we coming along as far as getting our inventory of available lots? How's that coming along? Thank you, Mita. You're muted?
Yes, we, we've been uh, looking at the lots and uh, one of the things that we had to kind of shift our strategy being that it's grass cutting time, is to begin to make sure that the lots that the village has been cutting are village-owned lots. And so I know uh, I've spoken to uh, Ms. uh, Nettie Matthews about some of the lots that she was cutting in the village that have been cutting in the past, but we began to kind of pull back from those lots so that we can uh, cite the owners and begin to go after them. Because in the past, the village has been cutting a lot of lots that don't belong to us. Uh, so we, we are, right now, we're just making sure we identify those lots so that the cutting crews aren't, aren't doing a, a lot of work that they shouldn't be doing and, and they are maintaining the ones that they should. So that's where we are with those lots. But we are still looking at our, trying to identify the locations that would be prime uh, candidates for offering up to uh, you know, builders and developers interested in, in bringing new inventory into the community. So we're, we're, it's still just an ongoing process. And one of the uh, biggest things that we had right before um, all of this COVID nineteen situation, I was uh, trying to work with uh, the Port Authority to get some of their resources to help facilitate this process. But uh, the COVID nineteen situation has delayed that. And additionally, uh, I've been trying to contact Hamilton County Cages so that I could ask them to go ahead and generate us a series of maps, being that we don't have the tools in-house to uh, expedite the process. So uh, haven't been able uh, successfully reach them uh, as of yet because of all the shutdown and work from home. So uh, I'll just kind of continue to uh, you know, go at it until we can get those maps uh, created. I, I uh, pulled together a list of maps that we're gonna need, you know, the village-owned properties, uh, the vacant properties, the residential areas uh, as well as, so that we could kind of isolate those on the map and we can bring them back to the committee and begin to say, okay, what would be ideal to retain and what wouldn't. So it's, right now, it's just about, everything is, is moving slow and, and, and we just don't have the uh, resources available at this time, you know, and we were, I had mentioned that it would be beneficial or advantageous to bring the ArcGIS uh, uh, platform into the village so that I could uh, manipulate the maps and begin to do some more uh, you know, assessments internally. So with this whole COVID nineteen, you know, it's, it's putting a freeze on the budget as well. So I was trying to reach out to them to try to, you know, hold off on making that expenditure if, if, if possible. So it, it's just a matter of getting the maps created and getting the technology in place because going on cages uh, myself, going on the online side, it doesn't give you the uh, the uh, flexibility or the, or the control of the map making process. So that's where we are with that. But we are moving forward. We have been identifying those lots that need our attention uh, during the grass cutting season as well.
Mayor? Yes, Ms. Goodwin? Question, Mr., to Mr. Dukes, you said exactly something I was thinking the last time that you mentioned that to see if we might be able to purchase the software to create our own maps and then the um, the printer that prints the maps out. I mean, just to see, you know, what the cost is because, I mean, you, you've been waiting on them for, you know, quite some time. And then I think with what we're planning to do or trying to do, it might be beneficial for us to have our own software and a printer if it's, you know, not too terribly expensive.
Well, yes, ma'am. Uh, it's, I, I think the software license uh, for a single license from Arc, Arc View, I ask, Arc View, I think uh, runs uh, about eighteen hundred. And then you would probably be looking at about two, three thousand for platter.
For the printer?
Yes.
And what I'll say too about the um, the platter, what I know about it, I mean, it has multiple uses. Um, I usually don't tell the secret, but I use that um, a platter like that to print out um, some of the things you saw around a couple of years ago when I was, you know.
Like your posters and things of that nature, you can use for, you know, like.
And they, banners, banners.
So it. We use, yes, yes, it'll be highly utilized uh, in the village, like say when we're doing. We use, yes, yes. It'll be highly utilized, uh, in the village, like say when we're doing events. Uh, say for instance, if we wanted to post something on the, on the door that was door size or put something, uh, vinyl banner outside the building, we could, we could do that with that plotter.
And, 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 um, doing that, when you have to, you know, purchase that from someone else, the markup on that is like probably a thousand percent, um, compared to what it would cost you to do it yourself. So this might be something we might want to look into.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'm, I may have to, uh, take another route. Uh, may just have to contact the, uh, the director over planning and development so that I can make some contact, because even with the software, we're gonna have to get the data set from the county, because they have all the GIS files and things of that nature. And the aerial photography that's updated. And speaking of aerial photography, they may, uh, require a fee from us each year. They fly to take new aerial foot, uh, photographs. So that may be an added cost that I'll have to have that discussion with them. But I, I will, uh, reach out to, uh, the, uh, the, uh, director to see if I can't get a little more assistance with generating those maps in the interim so that we can, uh, kind of keep moving forward. So hopefully I can make contact prior to the, uh, and have some maps in, uh, prior to the, uh, upcoming economic development committee meeting.
Yes, Mr. Daniels.
Just quick question to the Dukes, because I know you're talking about the GIS files, you know. Those things are public, just to make sure I'm clear. Are you having trouble from Hamilton County of getting those, those GIS, um, those files? Or just that, or just the overall, just getting in contact with them, just to even get the process started? Because.
Uh, just getting in contact with them at this point in time. So, I mean, uh, need to, you know, in the interim, if we could go ahead and get them to plot out the maps or at least generate them on their GIS system and, and, and send them over to us. And then in addition to go ahead and look at getting the shape files to, uh, bring it to our own inventory for, for future use, that would be good. But the key right now is just trying to make contact.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Dukes, I, I have, I have, I have to ask you something. So with, um, when it comes to assessing the properties of the village, I know, um, Hamilton County Auditor, that side has been very useful in trying to locate, just going down the line, look, putting our streets in. But I want to ask you, do you have like a timeline? I know with the COVID, is there any type of timeline going into the fall? But we'll be able to get assessment of the properties? Because I know we've been talking about it since October, November of last year.
Mm-hmm. Well, a lot's been going on, Mayor, uh, in, in between times. But, um, and, you know, it's like, it's a really tedious process. We can get the files from the auditor, but it comes in the spreadsheet that I delivered to, to, uh, the members. And again, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't give you the visual scale that you need to really kind of see where they are and what they are. So we can make a, a, a good assessment of, uh, which properties to keep, which properties to offer up, uh, uh, for sale. So, um, again, we, we're gonna have to get that visual representation in a map format. And, um, there's just no way to really kind of do it without the ArcGIS system.
Okay. Any questions for anyone else? Okay. All right. If there's nothing further, is there a motion to accept economic development, February and March report?
So moved to re- accept both reports for economic development.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Okay. All right. Motion in order for resolution number twenty twelve, authorizing the finance director to increase appropriations in the capital improvement fund, municipal road fund projects, and to amend the statement of estimated resources for twenty twenty.
Motion agreed by Title Longley.
Second.
Motion, motion that we read by Title Longley, I think. Vice Mayor, your, your computer kind of froze on you there.
No. Yeah.
It was moved, it was moved. Okay. Who gave me this? Who was the second?
Kathy Williams.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in fa- uh, roll call, Ms. Randolph.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumfree.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Here we have seven eye votes, motion passed. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty twenty dash R dash twelve, resolution authorizing the finance director to increase appropriations in the capital improvement fund municipal road fund projects and to amend the statement of his, of estimated resources for twenty twenty.
Mayor, I was just gonna mention, you might want to allow Ms. Pope to explain, uh, why this is being done, uh, because it is a large dollar amount, approaching a half million dollars.
Okay. Didn't we talk about this in the finance meeting though?
Yes, but I think for the residents, so they'll know what she's, what we're voting on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know they didn't have access to the man.
Go ahead, Ms. Pope.
Okay, so the, uh, four hundred and, what is it, four hundred, where's my thing at?
Seventy-eight thousand.
Four hundred seventy-eight thousand. That is for the Leggett and Schumar project. That is the final payment and it came in three, um, three lump sum amounts, one for four twelve, one for sixty and one for four thousand. So when we receive those payments on our behalf, we have to amend our estimated resources and record it. So this is just to record the payment that was made on our behalf.
And if I could just add to that, if I understood correctly, this was money that the Ohio Public Works Commission paid directly to the contractor.
Yes.
So it's not as if the four hundred and some seventy-eight thousand is coming out of the village coffers. These are payments that are being made by another agency for the street improvements. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Motion in order to suspend the rules for resolution twenty twenty R twelve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, roll call, Ms. Randolph.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumfree.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven eye votes, the motion passed.
Motion in order for passes to resolution twenty twenty R twelve.
No. Who, who made the motion?
Dorance's motion, Stinson O second.
Okay. Roll call, Ms. Randolph.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumfree.
Yes.
Vice, Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven eye votes, the motion passed.
There is a motion, emergency clause. Motion for the emergency clause of resolution twenty twenty R twelve.
So move for the emergency clause, second.
I was like.
Ms. Mitchell and then Vice Mayor, all right.
Well, then Ms. Mitchell. Did you say? I thought it was Ms. Jeters. It was me.
I'm sorry, I apologize, Ms. Jeters. Okay.
All right, moved in second, roll call, Ms. Randolph.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumfree.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeannie Stinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
We have seven eye votes, the motion passed.
All righty. Is there any miscellaneous business?
Everybody just seem to be safe, as Mr. Johnson, you know, said, that we had three cases in Lincoln Heights. Everybody please to be safe and, and, um, yeah, that's pretty much I had. We pray for everybody.
Yes, sir. Okay, I want to announce that, that my ex-husband's funeral is on the ninth of May. It is limited to family. It's on Facebook too.
Our prayers are with you, Ms. House Jeter, you and your family.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
I'd like to remind everybody, if they didn't know, that, um, Mayor Susan Upton Farley's services will be this Saturday, uh, May.
Second.
Second. And it's the same time as the pantry, as Ms., uh, Mitchell had mentioned before, starting at nine to eleven, then the funeral. And I believe it is open to the public at Woodlawn Mount Zion on Susan Farley Boulevard.
Vice Mayor, the funeral is open to the public? I thought it was just the viewing.
The viewing, the viewing, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think the funeral is closed.
And they're practicing social distancing. I don't know how that's gonna work.
So the funeral is at Lincoln Heights Baptist?
Yes.
Also, right?
Oh.
Yes.
I thought it was them. They changed it.
They changed it.
Wow, I didn't get that memo, okay.
Vice Mayor. I got a, a text today from Debbie Rose, her sister, and it's changed to Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist.
Well, some good news, I'd like to make an announcement that on, uh, that same day, May second, I'm turning twenty-five again.
All right. I'm gonna have to get you some balloons. I'll put them on your door.
Put them outside, I'll put them, because I am practicing distancing, you know, but thank you.
Good job.
I have my gloves and mask on when I put them there.
I'm gonna buy you some red heels and a leather skirt.
All right, you go, girl, because I am turning twenty-five again now.
All right. Well, if, if there's nothing further, is there a motion for an adjournment?
Yes, there is. Motion for adjournment.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all right, ayes, have a good night, be safe.
Night.